Okay.
Well, I'm glad.
Ready? Good afternoon. I'd like to call to order.
Still have my.
Publicity on binding units for the 2026 budgets. So we will be starting with solid waste.
You just want me to state my name or?
Yes, please say your name and if you've locked your position.
Sure.
For the record.
I am Jesse Biggerman. I'm the Executive Director of the Johnson County Recycling District.
Jeff Peters, the Financial Advisor for the Solid Waste District.
Anybody want to speak?
Yeah, a couple of things I did want to mention to you in your council worksheet, you'll notice that assessed value has grown at about 12.3% far out passing, far outpacing the 4% growth in the max levy. So overall, we anticipate the rates are going to fall from point 0084 to point 0075. Again, they just have the two funds, the operating fund and the debt fund, and the debt fund just serves principal and interest payments as they've come due in 26. For the budget itself in 2026, it is outpacing annual revenue by about 175,000. About 50,000 of that is the new increase in homestead credits and circuit breaker coming from your Senate Bill one changes. The solid waste district is anticipated though to be at the end of 2026 retaining a cash balance of about 1.1 million. So they can afford to absorb that loss throughout this year. The other thing that you may want to consider when you get into resetting those lit rates in 2028, you might want to consider what it is that you want as operational services from the solid waste and potentially funding out of those changes or funding those changes out of your new lit when you establish it in 28. With that, Jesse, can answer any questions in particular to the budget or I can on the finance?
Open the floor for discussion. I have nothing. I looked at the document and between Mr. Reuters and yourself, you've answered all the questions that I would have. Uh, we do take rec, we do have Mike look at this stuff and we take recommendations or if there's anything we need to address and good, I'm good. Anybody?
No comment.
Okay, then I'm prepared to take a motion. Um, these are going to be done pretty much consistently. So if everyone's okay, it's probably easier for one person to make the motion. And then we can get the second somewhere else because they're going to be pretty, pretty close to the same thing. If that's okay with everybody.
Perfect.
We, you, you have been nominated.
Um, move to approve the solid waste um general fund debt service budget as requested at 1,105,987. Uh, the um general fund and debt service levy at 999,289 and the uh general fund debt service tax rate at uh point 0075, all were as submitted.
Okay.
That work.
No discussion?
And then do we need to approve the levy?
We just, he included it.
Okay, I'm sorry.
No, you're fine. You're fine. He included it at the oh, at the point 0075. Right?
No, no, that's the rate.
The rate, I'm sorry.
99,000.
Okay.
289.
Okay, here no further discussion. Uh, we have a motion by Mr. Mallers.
Second.
A second by Mr. Dittmers. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Passes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Hans Lake Conservancy Dis- District. Okay, uh, normally no one is here from Hans Lake. So uh, we've looked at Mr. Reuters recommendations and it looks as everything that has been submitted has been recommended to be approved. So with that, if no one else has any discussion amongst ourselves, I'll entertain a motion for Hans Lake Conservancy District.
Move to approve Hans Lake Conservancy District's budget, general fund budget at 15,650. Uh, the levy at 12,900 and the tax rate at point 1413.
Further discussion? Hearing none, I'm prepared to take a mo, or that was the motion. No further discussion. I'll take a second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Myers. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Next up appears to be Amity Fire.
Uh, Heath Grant, Amity Fire Protection. Ours is pretty straightforward. Uh, last year was kind of our big year asking for a lot of extra stuff, but that was last year. This year's nothing extra.
Did you get your crack tank fixed?
Still working on that. Um, there were some issues with the company, but uh, it should be going um anytime now. It was the last update that I received.
What you're going to do?
Now, other than, you know, it's been pulling off of the conference from last year on rainy day. So you notice there's no rainy day appropriate next year. So commitment is to have it done by December. Hopefully, if I remember. If they're out of Chicago.
Okay, I have a question for you and bear with me. You'll help me out here. Mike uh looked at, as I said, reviewed all the information and have it here in front of me. Prove the general fund, approve the general fund levy and the that word fire levy as requested in the paperwork, but then he has changed the 2026 general fund recommended tax rate to the result of the certified AV recommended levy.
I don't know what he, I'd have to call Mike and ask him.
He is certified in AV.
Yeah. We didn't use it on the general fund. We go normally, we normally use 85% or 80%. So it'll be held to.
That's probably it then.
So that's probably what we have here, but point 1038.
It always.
The actual number should be?
Pardon?
So DLGF advisory to every unit for the last 35, 40 years has been to when you advertise your general fund, you've used 80% or 85% of the CNAB to ensure that you advertise a rate high enough to generate the funds necessary to meet the requirement.
And that's what you've submitted here? Okay, uh, Amy, can we do this? Can you shoot Mike? An email for us really quick before we approve this, just so we don't have to come back and redo it?
This is for Mike, so I would use these numbers.
Oh, so you think that has been correct? That is what he wants. Okay, good enough by me.
Okay. But you.
Yep.
All right. Uh, move to approve the Amity Fire Protection District. Um, see here, approve the general fund and special, special uh fire queue budget as requested at 290,845. Um, approve general fund and cume fire levy as requested at 174,436. And then um what, just approve the uh general fund and cume fire rates
Mm-hmm.
at point 1038.
Right. Okay, we have a second?
Second.
First by Mr. Mallers, a second by Mr. Bates. Discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up is uh Hensley Fire Protection District. Hi.
Thank you. Um, Jeff Peters, uh Financial Advisor from Fire District.
Marked our chief.
So did send over with the worksheet a little commentary for you, uh, just kind of highlighting the assessed value growth in that fire district of 14.89%. So you'll notice the same rate as last year for the cumulative fund applied to the new assessed value would produce a levy that's 14.89% higher as well. Overall, we're looking at the rate all in for their three funds would drop um to 1438, down from 1634. They are operating within their revenue stream or their revenue estimate for the upcoming year. And one thing we did want to remind you of is we had come to the council previously, their fire station debt, the last year for the levy to pay off that building is in 2026. They did have a three-year lead time on a fire truck that they have ordered. So in 26, we will be coming back to the council asking for a new debt to fund that fire truck, which we would like to put on the 27 tax rolls, but your approval will be required in 26 in order for us to do that. And be happy to answer any finance questions or uh chief can ask any or answer any questions on the expenditure side.
Discussion? Hearing none, prepared for a motion?
Um, move to approve the Hensley Fire Protection District budgets for the building debt fund, cume fire and general fund at 1,196,008. I think that's what that is. Uh, the levy for those three funds at 790,855 and the tax rates uh at point 1438.
Second.
We have a first by Mr. Mallers, a second by Mr. Myers. Hearing no further discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Okay, next we have um Needham Fire Protection District.
Thank you. Uh, Jeff Peters, Financial Advisor to the Needham Fire District. Have the chief with me for any expenditure side uh discussions. The uh, again, sent over some commentary for you. Assessed value growth in that area was only uh I believe it was 4.55%. So with the maximum levy growth, we're expecting that the rate's going to fall slightly from point 1406 down to point 1400. The budget does consume about $192,000 in cash. Their budget this year is consuming cash. But we do anticipate to start 26, they'll have about a million five in their operating fund. They are still looking for a solution as to how to get back to having revenues that cover their expenditures. Uh, potentially that may be a, a fire territory if they can find a partner to do that. Uh, if not, um, we'll just have to kind of play that by year as we go forward, but this keeps their service level pretty much at where it is today. And again, they do have um sufficient cash to cover that shortfall in money going into 26. Be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Discussion? Hearing none, I'm prepared to take a motion.
Move to approve the Needham Fire Protection District uh for fire general fund, the debt fund and the cume fire. Uh, the budget at 1,000,006783. The levy for the same three funds at 556434 and the rate at point 1400.
First by Mr. Mallers.
Second.
Second by Mr. Vitmers. No further discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you.
Next up would be the Nineveh Fire Protection District.
Chief Joshua Snyder. Nineveh Fire Department. We're just asking for the 4% increase in our budget. Just, and then um the cume fund staying the same and then a 4% prayer, 4% increase in our levy.
Okay.
Josh, is your revenue covering your budget?
Yes.
You're not running a deficit?
No.
Next.
Uh, move to approve the Nineveh Fire District for the special fire general fund and the cume fire fund. Uh, the budget at 632,695. The levy at 422510 and the rate at point 1215.
I'm changing. You want?
Right here.
You mentioned that we need to maybe reduce that back to.
Yeah, we can, we can just, um, um, Mr. Reuters comments were to approve this request, the prop tax levy was 4.07%. The maximum allowable, allowable for 26 is 4%. Um, he, he recommended approving it and you know, potentially DLGF might reduce that from 4.07 down to 4.0.
Correct.
So you're aware of that?
Yeah. Hey, on my paper, it just said 4%. I didn't have the point 0.
Okay, it's wrapped around and thing.
Yeah.
Okay, uh, first by Mr. Mallers. Need a second?
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Myers. Further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Next up is Barbersville Fire Protection.
Hello, I'm Brooke Shalay with 3D Financial Group, and then I have Mickey Bell and Chief excuse me, Chief Funkhouser with me as well. For the 2026 budget year, the general fund, we are going to be asking for the three-year growth appeal. It is the last year that you can submit for the three-year growth appeal. And with the growth being uh slightly over 13%, the general fund rate virtually remains the same with that three-year growth appeal. The cumulative fund, you will see a pretty large decrease in our budget. That was a purchase of an ambulance out of cash last year. This year it's just equal to the revenues as a balanced budget in the cumulative fund. And then in the debt fund is where you'll see a difference. We did advertise high there. That's because we are going to be asking for a new issuance of a debt before the end of the year and we aren't quite sure what that's going to look like. So for safeguarding purposes, we did advertise high, but we are working with the board and going through um tax impact analysis before anything is actually final. And we'll bring those numbers back to you in October.
So Mr. Reuters did point out here that he was assuming that you would be applying for the 2026 growth factor since it was high.
Yes, yep. I put a little note at the bottom of the county worksheet that it's approximately 700,000 of the levy increase for the three-year growth appeal. So that's the last year um for operational purposes.
Discussion?
Amy, do I just approve this as, as we have it from here from Mike?
No, you need to plug in the numbers.
And they're needed for uh
The debt of the
I'm looking at them.
See the blank.
Oh, I gotcha. So our instructions from Mike indicates that we need to plug those, we need to have those numbers for the special fire debt levy. And the, the let, the amount, the letting rate.
Yeah, budget rate and levy.
We do not have a final amortization yet, so that's why we advertise high. For the October, for the final reading and the adoption will be actual numbers.
Okay, for, in order for us to approve it as presented, we can't do that with nothing there. So do we insert the higher numbers, Amy, on the overall worksheet?
Would use the proposed.
Huh?
You would use the proposed.
Yeah, so why don't you?
Yeah, so the proposed on the county worksheet that was submitted is the proposed budget of 1,473,260 with a levy of 1.5 million, which would produce a rate of point 0726, bringing the total taxing unit rate of all three funds to point 5040.
So John, you can read the total of CIO.
E?
C.
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 Oh.
I.
Oh, I got you.
Gotcha.
Do you have the original submitted? I can read those numbers if you.
We do, but we also have a cover sheet that has them, so we're just trying to make sure we got the. Yeah, we've got them. I believe we're good to go here.
Perfect.
Any other discussion? You good with those numbers?
Yep.
Okay.
Uh, I, I move to approve the Barbersville Fire Protection Budget for the general fund, fire debt fund and the cume fire fund. The budget at 17,325,478. The levy at 10,407,878 and the tax rate at point 5040.
That should match.
Perfect, thank you.
So I have a first by Mr. Mallers.
Second.
Second by Mr. Myers. Further discussion?
When do you guys close, Yvonne?
Before the end of the year.
I mean, to have the numbers for the.
Over. For, we'll have it to you by, before the October meeting, before you send out the packets.
Further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Okay, uh, next up is White River Fire.
I have two.
Yeah, Amy gave us one today, was on our desk. That's the one we use, correct?
The one with MR?
No.
One without MR?
I gave you that one. Uh, do you count something?
Uh-huh. That's the one we use, right?
It's this one. You can use my paper.
Yeah, I've got it. I just want to see which it is. I think it does. Got it.
Uh, it's revised, yeah.
Where?
You have an extra copy, Amy?
Wouldn't say revised.
No.
Yeah, where does?
Just do the best I can.
Amy, where does it say revised? Am I just not seeing it?
I have zeros on these pages. There wasn't much change.
I'm I'll introduce myself, but I was waiting for you guys to.
Yeah, I know. We're trying to figure out where your numbers are because.
Okay.
I don't have anything that says revi, I don't have anything that says revised, I'm sorry. Okay, if you let them speak, it'll probably tell you what changed. It was a minor change.
So you, we are required to let them speak?
Sounds like, hey, the launch is good. I don't need to speak.
I'm sorry, you go right ahead.
I'm Jeremy Fellon, Chief of the White River Township Fire Department.
And I'm Ben Raker, I'm the Financial Consultant with the district. And there is one change. It had to do with the 2025 tax rate, which is shown. It was overstated previously. It's when actuality, the total tax rate for 2025 is, it was point 4054. Oh, thank you.
Always come with.
What?
So I'm hearing him say, you can use these numbers with exception of the change that he's talking about here.
But that was 25 though. That was changed to the 25 numbers?
Yeah.
Okay. I think I got it.
Okay. Sorry, we don't do this all the time.
I, fine. Yeah, I, I told you, you got a tough job. Just let me know when you're ready.
Okay.
I could probably do this in 60 seconds or less.
Okay.
So I just gave you a handout. And I just wanted you to know in summary, beyond looking at the council review form, what the impact is. Uh, this budget that we've proposed is fully funded. It's a balanced budget. We anticipate when it goes to DLGF that we'll actually have a reduction in our tax rate and it continues the current level of service. What that means for the people that we serve is that it maintains the minimum staffing on our fire trucks and of our ambulances. That this year, given the economic climate and Senate enrolled Act One, we're going to focus on getting better before we get bigger. And there's an extremely strong focus on these Johnson County Fire Department is working together so we can leverage our strengths to be more efficient for the community. Uh, and we can do it. I, I know we can. We've got the right people in the right places and we're already starting it. And that includes working with Senator of PD and working with our Sheriff's Department and Greenwood Police Department because and we are stronger together, but our responses are so much better now that we're working with law enforcement from hostile events to just everyday calls. And then we're obviously very proud of our, our mobile integrated health program because we're getting to the heart of people's chronic health conditions and we're getting ahead of it so that we're giving them better quality of life. But we're also freeing up first responders to take those emergencies. I would recommend you pass our budget rate and levy as it's presented.
Very helpful information and I like the chain of thought of Team Johnson County and not just individual units. I, I, I think Team Johnson County is way stronger together in all aspects.
I love it.
So.
I love it. And I could talk a long time about that. It's real life. It's not, it's not a fancy presentation. I can give you example after example of how we're doing things together.
Further discussion? Hearing none, I'm prepared for a motion.
Uh, move to approve 26 proposed budget for White River Township Fire Department. Uh, the budget for the uh cume fire fund, the general fund rainy day and of 19,785,239. Uh, the levy of 10,917,911 and the proposed tax rate for 26 at point 4103.
Got it.
Second.
I have a first by Mr. Mallers, a second by Mr. Bates. Further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you very much.
Thanks, sir.
So I don't think, I thought I would see a mass exodus when he got done.
It was really fun.
There you go, yeah.
We got people.
High sentiments, exactly.
Uh, I read this one. Ah, shit. She.
Shouldn't we made it right now before they?
The tax rate. Let me, let me get Ben, please.
He's here.
Okay.
He's here.
Amy went after the right one.
Amy, the, the one, the one that's supposed to be the right one has, has a zero there.
Yeah.
Which is why I read that. Is it this one after all that I should have wrote? No, I'm sorry.
Yes.
Okay.
What columns are we going to read from though?
I think everything else is all right, isn't it?
Yeah, I was just.
It's just the tax rate. So the tax rate was not point 4103. It was in fact, point 398106.
The one thing.
Just the thing.
Yeah.
Point 410.
Say that again?
That was point 4103.
Okay.
We think in actuality, we'll deal with, we'll do so down to 39 cents.
Okay.
Okay. So we need to amend the motion to read what?
Change the rate.
Change the rate. Change the rate.
So I amend the motion to change the rate from point 4103 to point 39 18116.
What places?
Point 3918.
Oh, part 3918.
And Mr. Bates, you continue the second thought? And
Yes.
All in favor of that change of motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No, you're good to go.
All right.
Thank you very much.
You're all good.
So that will adjourn our meeting of the public hearing on binding units for the 2026 budget. And now we will resume uh, our second reading.